All right, welcome to the 20th September 2022 regular meeting for the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For detailed information on our meeting procedures, please review the full printed meeting agenda that is provided. Mr. Leonard, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibran-Del.
Present.
Commissioner Abrams. Commissioner Sauvay.
Here.
Commissioner Mills.
Here.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt. Commissioner Dish. Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Weich.
Here.
We have a quorum of six, but for the reminder to the commission and the members of the public, it requires six affirmative votes to advance any petition.
All right, thank you. We will move on to the approval of the agenda, which is item number three. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? I'm moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Dish. Any discussion on the motion?
Sauvay.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, too many. Sorry about that. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay, we will go on to item number four, which is minutes of the previous meeting. We have two meeting minutes. I hope you all had a chance to look at them. Is it all right if we take those together? All right. Can I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Sauvay. Any discussion? None? All right, everybody, vote please. Looks like it passes. All right, now we are up to item number five, which is reports from city administration, city council, planning manager, planning commission, and officers and other committees. It looks like we do not have our city council representative, but perhaps Mr. Leonard could kick us off.
Yeah, sure. At city council last evening, the development agreement for 2424 East Stadium was approved, as well as both the plan unit development zoning and site plan approval for 340 Depot. All those were passed on last evening's agenda, and I have no additional planning manager report this evening.
Okay. Any other commissioner officers or liaisons would like to report anything? Nobody to report anything. All righty, we will move on to item number six, which is public comment. And this is an opportunity for people to speak up to three minutes about an issue that is not listed on the planning commission agenda for tonight. We'll first call on individuals present to address the commission, and then remote participants. To speak during the public hearing remotely, press star nine if listening by phone, or use the raise hand feature if viewing for the web link. For phone access, call 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. To unmute, press star six. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand using the last three digits of your phone number or by name. You will hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sound so that we may hear you clearly. For either method of participation, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anybody present that would like to kick us off? Nobody present. Okay, Mr. Leonard, anybody virtually waiting in line?
No speakers indicating have raised their hand.
Okay. We'll move on to item number seven, which is public hearings for the next business meeting.
No one has scheduled public hearings for the regularly scheduled business meeting.
Okay, that's a surprise. All righty, then we will move on to item number eight, which is our regular business. We will start with the Redeemer Ann Arbor Site Plan and Special Exception Use for City Planning Commission with Landscape Modifications at 529 Detroit Street, which our address is 521 and 529 Detroit Street, project number SEU 21-006 and SP 21-045. So, let's see. By way of introduction, this will be a proposal to restore and add a 1,314 square-foot addition to 525 Detroit Street and reuse 521 Detroit Street. A landscape modification is requested for relief from the conflicting land use buffer requirement along the north boundary where the driveway is located. This special exception use petition requires religious assembly use for the parcel at 529 Detroit, which includes 525 and 521 Detroit Street located in a residential district. Staff recommendation is approval. All righty, so we have up to 10 minutes for a petitioner presentation, and after that we'll have a staff presentation. Is this going to be remote or in person?
In person, I believe.
In person, all right.
My name is Gary Cooper. I'm an architect with Cooper Design here in town, and I'm representing Redeemer Ann Arbor, which is the church that is proposing the renovation of the building. You all know it was the former Treasure Mart site. The building was originally built in 1869, and it was a planing mill, and later it produced doors and windows and different running trim. It had various uses over the years. There were various other buildings on the site. There were barns and storage buildings. It was a furniture store at one time. It was a fruit and vegetable warehouse and shipping area also. The Treasure Mart occupied the building from 1961 until, I believe, 2020, when they sold, put the property up for sale, and it was purchased by Redeemer. We are proposing to restore and rehabilitate the existing building. I'll talk about the additions in a minute. Maybe we can look at the site plan a little more detail. The next slide has an enlarged site plan. So, the circulation works similar to the way it is now, that you enter between the house and the Treasure Mart building, and you go down a level, or approximately three-quarters of a level, to a parking area. We're providing 17 parking spaces total. We're also picking up all the stormwater in a infiltration bed, and it then passes on to the storm sewer system in Detroit Street. We've got all the yellow shaded parking spaces in the back are either scheduled to be electrified with electric charging or to be wired for future electric charging. The building will have two entrances, one off the rear, which will be a barrier-free entrance, which is right adjacent to the rear parking area. And then there's a front door entrance off Detroit Street on the northeast corner. The proposal is to maintain the house as it presently is, which is, I believe, four rental units, and they're all occupied. At some point in the future, the church may want to use some of that building for church uses, but that's to be determined. The plan is to renovate the existing building, which is three levels, a lower level, which is approximately half a level below grade, a first-floor level, and a second-floor level, which we propose to expand. The main building is the historic brick building, which you see from the street and which fronts Detroit Street. And then there is a series of additions on the rear of the building, and those additions have changed over time. They went from being wood-framed to brick-framed to concrete block, and so they are not historically significant. However, we are keeping the main addition on the back, which is a stair lobby that goes through all three floors. We're proposing to reconstruct what they called the office addition, which is in the northwest corner, and that's just due to the condition of the building. It's got poor foundations, the brick walls are failing, and we will replace that in the same footprint that it is now. We're also proposing to then add 250-square-foot entry stair lobby, which would be the entrance off of, the new entrance off of Detroit Street. So you would enter on the north side and enter the stair lobby, and then you'd have access to the upper floors. While the building, while we're adding, I think, a total of 1,300 square feet of additional space, we're only increasing the footprint of the building by 250 square feet, which is the square footage of the entry tower. The remaining additions will be above the one-story additions that are existing at the rear, which is basically the northwest corner. The church proposes to use the basement as a fellowship hall for dinners and after-service events. The main floor is a multipurpose space, possibly with a nursery, church offices, things like that. The upper floor is the worship space, which has a little bit taller ceiling, and all will be accessible through a new elevator, the entry stair tower, and then the rear stair, which is existing. We're here. Let me go on to the next slide, I guess. This is a hard-to-read drawing since it's not rendered, but that's a plan at the lower level, which accesses the back parking where there's a main entry. The next slide is the first floor, which has the new stair entry and enters off of Detroit Street. Next slide. And these are some 3D renderings, and we've taken the trees out because the trees would have obscured too much of the building to be able to see. But you see on the right the dark-colored addition for the stair tower. You see on the left the original building, and we propose to restore all the window openings and door openings. A lot of the current windows were originally doors, service doors. We would replace the doors. We would replace and reconfigure the windows to the original condition, and then we would build our second-floor floor addition on the back that you see on the right. Next slide. And you can see here from the southeast, the drive entering off Detroit Street going down behind the building where the parking mainly is. Again, we'd restore the cornice on the front, repair the brick, modify the openings in this elevation and the next elevation. And this would be from the southwest, and that would be the rear entry that enters in between the basement and first-floor level and allows you to move up through all three levels of the building. And this is also the barrier-free entrance. And the building on the left is the reconstructed office portion of the building, which is now three stories as well. We'll be here with any questions, for any questions that you might have. The team is here, the construction manager, the owner, the civil engineer. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a staff presentation?
Yes, hello. I'm Jill Thatcher, city planner. Very quickly, just two little things. One is that the Historic District Commission approved this in August of 2021, and they're very appreciative of the vast amount of restoration efforts that would go into this plan, and they were very relieved to see that the building would be reused in an appropriate way. The only other thing is that under staff recommendations, I do have to clarify that the motion does not have a condition of approval, but I said in the staff recommendation that it should be approved with conditions. I'm going to strike that from the staff recommendations. I just didn't do that in time, because there are some things that they need to clean up on the site plan that are code change-related, but everything that they're proposing meets code, so, current code, today's code. So, none of that is substantive, and I've already talked to them, and they're going to make the changes, so it's very minor. Other than that, the staff finds that it meets all applicable development and special exception use standards, and I recommend approval. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate the photos, or the images and things like that that you included in the staff report about the history. That was really interesting. All righty, we will move on to the public hearing portion of this. This is an opportunity for persons to speak up to three minutes about this project. We'll first call on individuals present, and then remote participants. To speak during the public hearing remotely, press star nine if listening by phone, or use the raise hand feature. For phone access, call 877-853-5247, and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand using the last three digits of your phone number. You'll hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sound so that we may hear you clearly. For either method of participation, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anybody present that would like to speak at this time? Come on up. You have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Good evening, everybody. My name is David Santa Croce. My wife and I live at 509 Detroit Street, which is two doors down from the house and three from the Treasure Mart. I attended the community participation meeting. We also own a house, 526 North Fifth, that butts the back of the, where the proposed church is. I just ran out in the rain down the street to say, "I love this project. This building is a, I'm going to miss the Treasure Mart, and it's not a Neapolitan pizza place serving espresso." But these people have all been wonderful to the neighborhood. They've been super informative. They're really going to make this building shine the way it used to. I think it's a very important building historically, and I'm enthusiastic that they get it done and get it built. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak on this project? Okay, well, let's move on to any folks waiting in line virtually.
No speakers have expressed the desire to address the question.
Okay. All righty, well, I will read the motion, and there are two, because, I think because we have the SEU.
You have approval of a site plan, and then you also have approval of a special exception use for the proposed use.
Yeah. All righty, so, I will read the motion here. "The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission approves the Redeemer Ann Arbor Site Plan with Landscape Modifications to allow the elimination of conflicting land use buffer along the northeast property line as it complies with all applicable requirements of Unified Development Code and other applicable laws, ordinances, standards, and regulations based on the following conditions. All parcels must be combined before issuance of building permits." And the second motion is, "The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission, after hearing all interested persons and reviewing all relevant information, including and accompanying site plan, finds the petition substantially meets the standards in Chapter 55, Unified Development Code, Section 5.29.5. D, special exceptions, and therefore approves the Redeemer Ann Arbor special exception use for religious assembly. This approval is based on the following findings. One, the proposed use will be consistent with the R4C, Multiple Family Dwelling District, which provides for residential use, including special exceptions for religious assembly. The proposed use will not adversely impact traffic, pedestrians, bicyclists, circulation, or road intersections based on the location. Detroit Street provides access to the site, and the proposed use is consistent with the existing and other surrounding use's traffic impact. And three, a site plan documenting the existing and proposed conditions of the site has been submitted as part of this application." All righty, that was the motion, moved by Commissioner Mills and seconded by Commissioner Weich. We are in discussion. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you. I just wanted to note for everyone that in addition to the public comment that we got here, we also got a number of letters in our packet, including, it seems like, and this is just making sure that I'm getting my bearings right, one from the neighbor to the north where the conflicting land use buffer, we are waving the conflicting land use buffer. Is that right?
One correction. She actually wrote back and said she's the neighbor to the south.
Okay. So it's not the conflicting land use buffer side?
No, it's not.
Okay. I'm glad that that is now clarified for us. Even so, all of these are largely in favor, and having spent a lot of time in this neighborhood, including on the backside, I don't know that it's directly on the backside, but I agree that this seems like a great project that is going to be a benefit for the neighborhood. And I think this is the thing that I would maybe regularly say when we're looking at special exception uses, particularly for religious assemblies, that the extent to which we can think about programming that site to not just be a, you know, a couple-hour-a-week activity, I'm really interested in, you know, using that parking lot and making that a kind of a vibrant space. I'm not sure if there's discussion about kind of what programming happens there throughout the week. That's not necessarily an architecture question, but...
Do you want me to respond to that?
Yeah, I think that that would be great, if there's any plans for that, just so we've got some sense of...
Well, some of that is in the future. I mean, currently, we allow Zingermans employees to park there, and they have, during the entire time that we have owned the property. And so, we will definitely be aimed at the neighborhood. Last year and this year again, we have leaf raking projects for older residents, and that seems appropriate for the situation. We will be alert to other opportunities to, I mean, we're here for the city, not just for those who attend church. That is our decided purpose, and we will be alert to opportunities as they emerge to answer that call.
Great. Thank you. I'm, like I said, I think that this will be a great addition.
Commissioner Sauvay?
I have a question for staff. Is there anything that we need to amend based on the comment about conditions from the motion?
No, the motion is correct.
And then I have a question to the petitioners. I heard parking for Zingermans, but, and I understand that this has been a process for, you know, over a year, and in that time, we've removed parking minimum requirements. And so I am curious about the current parking configuration, and if there's any other, you know, future plans where parking may not be required. I think in the citizen participation survey, there was like surveyed 150 adjacent parking spaces throughout the neighborhood. I understood some barrier-free spaces are really, you know, helpful for anybody coming to the site, but is there any plans, maybe this is my hopeful wish, to see less impervious pavement in the future, you know, in an update to the site plan for any other program use? There's like a small kid area in the corner and things like that, so I'm not sure if anything of that's been considered or understood now that we don't have parking minimum requirements for the project.
My name's Jerry. I'm from Washtenaw Engineering. So, if you, as Gary mentioned, on the site plan, there's an orange line that indicates stormwater infiltration, so that's probably more effective than impervious or pervious pavement, because pervious pavement gets filled up with silt and you name it, and after years, it will stop working. So, everything's directed to catch basins and into this infiltration bed, so it's probably a much better choice to go that way. If that...
I guess my hope is like removing parking and like putting in some more green space in the future in terms of like other use, right? Like increasing the pervious space for more garden space or something like that in the future. So I just wanted to make the petitioner aware that, you know, that's no longer a requirement, and so there could be kind of future improvements that is less parking area, which would be great to see. But other than that, I really appreciate, you know, the work and effort on the project and what it's doing for the context of the Historic District and the improvement of the site, so thank you.
Any other comments? Oh, Commissioner Weich?
This is probably for staff. What, how are we treating the house? They said that the tenants were staying, and it's on the future parts of this, that just sit within its existing zoning until they make a proposal to change any of that, and are there any additional requirements to the site because the housing is there on this site?
So, for now, the house stays. It remains a four-unit rental property, and it will become part of a larger lot, because there are two lots right now that will be combined. And, but there are no changes to that property proposed right now as part of this site plan.
Okay.
Yes, depending on what they want to do with it, they might have to come back again to this body if they needed, if they wanted to amend their special exception use and use that for church uses or something. But for now, it's just a four-unit apartment building, and we have talked a little bit about future improvements to it, but right now, they're focusing on the brick building.
Okay. And then the other comment is to the petitioner. I see that you're only proposing eight bike hoops there, so one recommendation is to see if you can increase that, and one way that I think you can achieve that without increasing the footprint is to use the Boston-style post and ring rack, which will allow you to place more bike racks there, as well as it can accommodate different types of bikes, like cargo bikes, as well as electric bikes as they hook in, especially if you're hoping to achieve a neighborhood presence for the religious use and potentially having folks bike to church. And as a pastor of a church that people bike to, we have run out of bike spaces, and so just a small recommendation for you. This looks great. Glad you got through the Historic District approval process, and thanks for the work that you're doing on the building. I echo my colleague Commissioner Sauvay's comments around impervious space and the parking. I was surprised to see so much parking there in that space, and I would love to see you utilize that site more and give less of the site over to parking, so the expansion of the playground, which Commissioner Sauvay has already mentioned, or just creating a picnic area or a green space just as relief, you know, sort of overflow after your services or just a gathering place, as opposed to people having to come out of the building and dodge cars, you know, even though it's only 17 cars in that little loop. So just, you don't have it on your plan, but if you do make changes because of the house or expansions, we would love to see more utilize, more utilization of the site for activation as opposed to for car storage.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Any other comments? Okay, are we ready for a vote?
All right, so this is a roll call vote on both motions as presented. Commissioner Gibrandle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sovee?
Yes.
Commissioner Dish?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Weich?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. You're welcome. We will move on now to Item 8B, which is the North Maple Apartments, annexation of three parcels in Scioto Township, which is 1855 North Maple Road, 1875 North Maple Road, and 1921 Calvin Street. This is PUD zoning and PUD site plan approval to construct a 79-unit apartment community with a single-story clubhouse. Addresses include 1815, 1855, 1875 North Maple, and 1921 Calvin Street.
If you could, my apologies to the commission, to the public, if you could just give me one moment. We had a couple of late correspondence regarding this petition that while Mr. Kahn gets situated, I will pass out. Or actually, take one and pass it to them.
All right. So we can have the petitioner presentation, the 10-minute petitioner presentation.
So we have a bit of a blended presentation. Obviously, we've got two team members that are joining remotely, and then I'm here in person. So first of all, thank you all for being here this evening. My name is Jeff Wilkerson. I'm the founding partner with A2 Collaborative, the design firm responsible for the North Maple Road apartment site plan we're presenting this evening. I'm also the managing partner with A2 North Maple Properties. And as previously mentioned, Tristan and Carolina are the other two team members with A2 Collaborative, and they will be running the slideshow tonight. Tom Kovar with Midwestern Consulting is also present, and I believe Bob Overheiser with Architects Design Group should be joining remotely. And so just to kind of move into the, the site plan and give you a little bit of a background and history of the project, you know, I'll start out with the, with the location. We are on the northwest side of Ann Arbor, as shown on this local map. You can zoom in as close to the M14 interchange there as possible. We do run right up to the top of, there is an M dot easement to the extreme north, and you'll see the various parcels highlighted here that are involved with the project. And to that end, 1815 North Maple is the only parcel that is currently in the city of Ann Arbor proper. The other, the others are currently still a part of Scioto Township, and so annexation is part of this proposal. The parcel 1921 was previously four distinct parcels. We have already combined those, so essentially, there are three parcels needing to be annexed with this project. And our design team really, from the start, wanted to consider seven primary objectives in optimizing this, this site plan. Number one, we wanted to take into account both current and future residents' needs and concerns with the project. We wanted to design a resilient, future-reaching community that was all-electric and also anticipated less dependence on automobiles. We wanted to strive for sustainability in our design, and to that end, we've included photovoltaics and are currently exploring geothermal options. We also wanted to provide new housing opportunities with the city, including a 15% affordable component. We have preserved natural features wherever possible, and especially in relation to the wetland setback area and the parcel 1921. We also wanted to minimize impervious surface cover, and lastly, create more cohesion as far as pedestrian and bike access along North Maple Road. And so I feel with help from city staff and other stakeholders, we've achieved those objectives and have a very nice and balanced forward-reaching design. And so with that, I'll let Tristan and Carolina walk the rest of you through the specifics. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Ready? Okay. So our proposal explores the construction of a four-story residential apartment building that contains 79 units in a single-story community building for recreation. The design aligns with many of the city's planning goals, including, one, the inclusion of 15% affordable housing units, that is a 12-unit total. We propose expanding and improving pedestrian access along North Maple Road through the incorporation of a protected pedestrian crosswalk, an extension of sidewalks connecting the existing gap between M14 and Maple Cove. We maintain 50% open space throughout the project, allowing for the preservation of 16 out of 38 landmark trees in the site, plus another 72 out of 101 other trees. The design incorporates roof-mounted solar power and all-electric appliances. The addition of EV parking stations and a commitment to electrification aligns with Ann Arbor's A202030 Carbon Neutral Initiative. We are creating an architectural entrance to the city of Ann Arbor by engaging the street front with a community building and incorporating innovative facade designs to activate North Maple Road, and we are providing more human-scale spaces within the city, such as the courtyard space in the center of the project.
The apartment building is located along the northeast edge of the site, creating a gateway to the city from the M14 loop. The building wraps a courtyard space at the center of the site that preserves several landmark trees and provides active open space for the residents. We've located the parking towards the southwest of the site with a single vehicular entrance on North Maple Road. This makes the parking less apparent and shifts our focus to the community building with active programs like a gym, a bike repair, and storage station fronting the North Maple Road. Our parking lot reduces the number of spaces to 0.86 to 1, which encourages alternate means of transportation for the residents and guests on-site. We incorporated a mixture of EV, compact, accessible, and guest parking spaces to fit in a tight loop, minimizing the impervious cover and visual impact of the lot. The site also incorporates a one-to-one bike parking-to-unit ratio with a mixture of e-bike, Class A, and Class C parking around the site and inside the community building. The current state of North Maple Road is incomplete. On the east side, there's a full-length sidewalk that taps into the vast trail network of Ann Arbor, but on the west side, there's a pretty big gap between Maple Cove Development, which is just towards the south, and M14. Our design will fill this gap with a new sidewalk all the way through the new development. We also propose a safe rectangular rapid-flashing beacon-protected crosswalk to span North Maple Road, directly connecting the Garden Homes Park, which is just east of the site, with the community, allowing access to the, a proposed covered bus stop on-site, which our team worked really hard with Ann Arbor Area Transit Authority to find the placement and access for the bus stop. This would create a paired stop, which allows local residents to get on and off the bus from either side of the road and cross at the new crosswalk. With this connection, we will have an easier access to the neighborhood, and we can emphasize the importance of other forms of transportation in place of cars. The apartment building will have 79 units, 12 of which are affordable. It will be a mixture of studios, one-bedroom units, and two-bedroom units. The design includes a lobby, indoor mailroom, leasing office, and personal storage lockers to be utilized by the residents. And the units will have triple-pane operable windows, an above-average insulated envelope, and Energy Star appliances. We are currently exploring the feasibility of geothermal systems with strategic energy solutions to provide more sustainable heating and cooling for the building. The community building will contain 35 indoor bike parking spaces, a bike repair station, gym, lockers, and a bathroom for residents. Our design is meant to be minimal, to not distract from the existing natural features that surround the site, but create a textured facade of brick, composite wood, and ephist that would mimic and contrast the colors and textures surrounding. We capture all onsite stormwater with two underground detention basins, an outlet to the Garden Homes drain on Foss Street. All onsite sanitary sewer, electrical telecom, and water will be accessed from North Maple Road right-of-way. And the site plan, these are the approvals from the departments that we have discussed.
Our design is built on researching historic community concerns and integrating the answers into our project. We are creating a safer pedestrian access across Maple Road while incorporating alternate modes to access the city, human-scale spaces that speak to the values of the community, and a holistic design that integrates the goals of Ann Arbor through the conscious strategies that we have discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kahn, do you have a staff presentation?
I do. As a PUD, it's important for the project to be consistent with the purpose statement of PUDs, and one of the key elements of that is a site that is unique in nature. This site is a gateway site. It is at the edge of the urbanized area. In fact, immediately to the west are Township Island parcels that are not currently served by water or sewer. Much of the parcel abuts M dot right-of-way. A new, a relatively new M dot roundabout was recently constructed at the north, near the northeast corner of, of this site, and Skyline High School was constructed a little bit more than a decade ago, which have substantially changed traffic patterns in, in the area. So I do want to point out that it is my belief that the site does qualify as a, as a unique site. The petitioner, as, as they indicated, are exploring the feasibility of including geothermal as part of this project that would be under the parking lot, working with the proposed subterranean detention system, so they don't conflict with one another. I'm sure they'll be able to speak more about that. The petitioner did invite Tom Kovar from Midwestern Consulting, who is here with us in case you have any questions about the site plan or any of the engineering or landscaping. I, I do want to summarize the recommendations. Staff recommends, recommends the annexation. Petitions be approved because the properties are within the city's utility service area. There are three parcels that need to be annexed. Staff recommends that PUD zoning be approved because the physical characteristics, design features, and amenities provide a benefit, a beneficial effect for the city in terms of health, safety, welfare, and aesthetics, including innovation of land use and variety of design, layout, and type of structures that further the stated goals and physical character of adopted land use plans and policies. Lastly, staff recommends that the site plan be approved because it complies with all applicable local, state, and federal laws, ordinances, standards, and regulations, would not cause a public or private nuisance, and would not have a detrimental effect on public health, safety, and welfare. Just concluding, I, I have not heard any negative, negative concern about the project from residents. You did receive a couple letters today that summarized their, their thoughts about the project, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. All righty, we will move on to a public hearing. This is an opportunity for persons to speak up to three minutes about this petition. We'll first call on individuals who are present to speak to, address the commission, and then remote participants. To speak during the public hearing remotely, press star nine if listening by phone, or raise, use the raise the hand feature through the web link for phone access. Call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-663-41226. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand using the last three digits of your phone number or by name. You'll hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sound so that we may hear you clearly. For either method of participation, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anybody present that would like to speak on this? Come on up.
My name is Terry Caldwell. I live at 2351 Foss Street, so I am two houses in from Maple on Foss. We had a meeting via Zoom this spring with the developers, and there was a great deal of concern regarding the parking issue. The intention of the developers, it sounds great. It does. But the fact is, people are going to have cars, and they are likely going to end up parking in our neighborhood, you know, blocking, you know, our mailboxes, trashcans, you know, all of those kinds of things, the plowing and such. And I did not hear anything on what's going to be done for that. But when we had the meeting, parking was the biggest issue that all the neighbors were pretty consistent about. You know, some of us had other things, but, but that was the main one. I know that there's not much point in saying I would prefer thus and such, you know, with that property, because it's going to be what it's going to be. They're going to, you know, it's going to be developed, and this particular project looks good. I just wish that the ratio of apartment to parking was better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else present that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Chevalier. I reside at 1761 Calvin Street. During your presentation, I didn't hear what was planned for the 1921 Calvin Street parcel other than possible annexation. Few years ago, we already have a neighborhood in the neighborhood, which is Maple Cove. Calvin is considered a shared drive. You need 100% agreement of all the neighbors living there in order to access our road. We pay our taxes to the township. We take care of our road. We don't get anything in return, okay? In order to, I would like to know how you plan to cross over Calvin Street, because a few years ago, like I say, before the Maple Cove project was approved, we had gone to the Lansing and hired an attorney. He looked at, under the great seal of state, and found that, yes, indeed, we are correct. I hold deeds back to the 1800s. The problems I have with this is you're putting another neighborhood in a neighborhood. You are piecemealing annexation of this island. There will again be no access to Calvin Street. We have lighting issues with the proposal. There's not enough parking, I agree, and it doesn't fit the existing structure of same-family homes that are currently there. It's already congested on Miller and Maple due to the acquisition of lanes for bikers. So on game day and other ways, this is going to be a problem. It's extremely close to the roundabout and M14. I thought, I heard there's one curb cut that is in this plan. Not sure. I need to confirm that. There's going to be lighting issues. Most of the neighbors in this neighborhood are retired on fixed income, so we have to address that as well. There's also another apartment proposal that's been agreed to. It's going in on Miller and Maple, off of Miller. So there's some proposal there, and that was okay, but there was a five-year moratorium on the build, so they are starting to clear that property at this time. I agree, there's going to be people cutting down Foss and the other neighborhoods. I agree, there's going to be people cutting down Foss and the other neighborhoods. What is the cost of this for? You know, we're going to need speed bumps, kids. I like the blinking light crossing, but it's just so congested. I thank you so much for listening to me. If you want to speak, I'm here.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to address the planning commission?
My name is Brian Biggs. I live at 2661 Woodrow. I butt up to the MDOT-acquired properties. And I know when they, you know, for the last 58 years I've lived in that neighborhood, that entire yellow area down there is wet. So what are they going to do about the wetlands? They're going to destroy them? What are they going to do about staying off of my road to build their houses? Because they don't own Woodrow. So that means all their construction's got to come across the backside over there. Then, with this Maple Cove project, that they had all these historic trees, not a single one of them's left. So I know back in this yellow area, you've got walnut, you've got oak, you've got hickory. They're all beautiful trees. They're going to be gone. For what? And then, just out of curiosity, 58% is what I'm seeing that's supposed to be saved for green space? What 58%? None of this is clear to anybody. And at what point are the actual residents of the neighborhood going to be taken into consideration? Not this big, beautiful picture that they painted on your street, because that's not what it looks like. If any of you have been out there, go out there at 7:30 in the morning and at 2:45 in the afternoon and try to get through. You can't, because you've got all the high school traffic, you've got everybody getting off of work, getting on the highway. It's impossible. And now you want to add more? It just doesn't make sense. Not that I don't mind, you know, we've got to do what we've got to do to make the world better, but we don't have to do it right there in the middle of a roundabout. I mean, if you go down there and look, that roundabout's not old enough to be destroyed, but it's destroyed. There's tire tracks going across the middle. It's just, it's a death trap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody. I'm Lance Brown. I am the husband of Cheryl Chevalier. And I don't know if, has there been a traffic study done impacting this? Because I'm just, I've got concerns about a flashing crosswalk right out of that roundabout. I mean, I've never seen that done before. And we've had hazards at crosswalks all along. I'd like to see a traffic study, especially since we're building another, you know, however many apartment complex on the corner of Miller and Maple. That one's under construction right now. All we're worried, we're worried, just like our neighbor on Foss Street said about parking, too. I don't think they'll ever come down our private street, because, yeah, you can't come down Calvin. It is a private drive. And, I mean, we're piecemealing everything together, but that, I don't know how many curb cuts you can have in that quarter mile up till the corner, but it's, you know, two apartment complexes are going to impact the traffic tremendously. I'd like to see a study. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else present that would like to speak on this project? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to anybody who's in line, online.
Any online speakers, please use your raise hand feature, or *9 depending on your access. Seeing none.
Okay. Alrighty, I will read their proposed motion then, and then we will move into discussion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the Mayor and City Council approve North Maple Apartments Annexation, PUD, Planned Unit Development, Zoning District, and Supplemental Regulations, PUD Site Plan, and Development Agreement. Moved by Commissioner Sauvay, seconded by Commissioner Mills. We are in discussion. Commissioner Dish.
Thanks, all of you who came out to share your concerns. I want to address the ones that I think I understand from having read the report, and as usual, planning staff.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Commissioner.
Can you not hear me?
I can, but, Terri Brandall, we do have a speaker subsequently added on raised hand. I don't know if you want to accommodate that or consider the public hearing closed.
I'm okay about letting them in.
Dan Adams, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hi, good evening. My name's Dan Adams. I'm a resident of First Ward on Daniel Street. You know, I listened to the public comments earlier, and while I'm sympathetic to a lot of the concerns that were raised by the folks that are living in the vicinity of this development, you know, I wanted to offer the perspective of somebody else who lives in a different neighborhood, and how these decisions, and I'm sure all of you know this, but I just want to provide a different perspective. There are immediate impacts, of course, for the folks that live near the development, which is being proposed, I think, on very favorable terms relative to other developments that have been approved by council and planning over the last two years. You know, broadly, you know, we have a housing crisis in the way that I've seen that manifest in the First Ward and Water Hill. Just down the street from me, we've seen a number of houses that, when I bought in 2012, you know, they were relatively affordable, even by City of Ann Arbor standards, $150, $200,000 homes that were within reach for me and, you know, folks in my income bracket, folks my age. And those homes are being torn down now to build mansions. They're being torn down to build $750 million, million-plus-dollar homes, because that's where we are. That's where we are with the supply of housing in the market, and it's creating a situation where the neighborhoods that are not this neighborhood, folks that are buying now, are being priced out. And I'm a corporate attorney, and I live surrounded by other corporate attorneys increasingly, and that's not great. I'm not disparaging my profession, but Ann Arbor can't be a place where only corporate attorneys and tech professionals and people with MBAs can afford to live. And I recognize the impact of disruption on the folks that are living near this development, but we have to build housing somewhere, and we have to find a way to accommodate that and satisfy some of the policy objectives that we set for the city and keep the City of Ann Arbor a place that is affordable to a broad range of different people from different backgrounds and different professions. None of these developments are easy. None of these development decisions are easy for you on the planning commission or for the city council. I'm pleased to see we're making progress, and I support this, and I hope you approve it. Thank you for accommodating me.
Thank you. Okay, well.
No other speakers.
No other speakers? Alrighty.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem. Yeah. Well, I wanted to, again, I want to thank the people who are here, and I want to make sure that you know that we're listening, and so I wanted to address a few of the concerns that I felt like I can address, and I wanted to ask Mr. Kahane to talk about the traffic study. So you raised a question about wetlands. And so there are wetlands on the far northern portion of the site and on the property to the west of the site. And as far as I understand from reading the report, those aren't going to be disturbed. You mentioned trees. The site does include a number of older trees. Those on the north side of the site are not going to be disturbed. The woodland on the south side of the site has mostly younger trees and some 38 landmark trees, 16 of which will be preserved. So there is, there will be some loss of trees, but by no means an entire loss of trees. I understand your concerns about traffic. Those of us who do live in the more peripheral parts of Ann Arbor are seeing a lot of development, and it is bringing a fair amount of traffic. So I wondered, Mr. Kahane, if you could speak to that concern?
I'd be happy to speak about the issues of traffic. What we're learning is that Ann Arbor is a jobs-generating community that is resulting in a remarkable number of folks who cannot afford to live here and commuting from other places. We're evidently producing more than 1,000 new jobs a year, and we're not creating that kind of housing supply. And so a lot of folks who are coming into Ann Arbor during those peak periods are coming here for work. And so those sites that abut a freeway interchange are likely going to see substantial increases in traffic over time. I would say this, a site that has 65 parking spaces is not likely going to be contributing an enormous percentage in the new growth of traffic that is going to take place throughout the community. With regard to your other question, Commissioner Dish, with regard to the traffic study, yes, our traffic engineers analyzed the site, recognizing that it was not creating an enormous amount of traffic during those peak periods, and was particularly interested in creating a safe pedestrian crossing, which the petitioner has agreed to fund, which will be a pedestrian crossing with a refuge island and our FBs, which will allow pedestrians to activate the signal and obtain a safer crossing. Tom Covert is with us from Midwestern Consulting, who is familiar with the traffic study more than I am, and I would invite Tom to correct anything I've said or add anything to the conversation.
Good evening, Commissioner. Tom Covert with Midwestern, as Jeff said. Jeff did point out all the things that we understand from working with the city transportation folks. We are in an interesting convergence of not only City of Ann Arbor right-of-way, but county and MDOT right-of-way, so we also engage those folks in the discussion. And with 65 spaces and based on the number of units that we have, the peak hour trip generation is different than the street, so we aren't tripping any numbers that would require any kind of studies or an amount of concern with regard to our access to the site. I will say, we do have a single access for our cars and access to the site. We have multiple pedestrian access to the site. We are promoting for the use of bicycles and so on through the site. We do have a second point of access to the site that I want to mention, that the neighbors were curious about curb cuts. We have a second point of access to the site. I don't want to call it a curb cut, because we're only going to use it for fire. If a fire truck needed to access the northern side of our building, there's an opportunity that would feel like a curb cut, that the fire truck could access the north side of the building. So we do have that secondary limited access to our site. But from a trip generation, transportation perspective, MDOT, the county, and the city engineers didn't have the concern with any kind of traffic issues with what the site would generate at peak hours.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question?
It's more of a, I always want to make sure, no, not for you. I just, thank you. I didn't mean that. I didn't mean to. I wasn't trying to be rude. I just want to make sure that I am understanding this clearly, Mr. Kahane, and I think that those of us who live in these more peripheral areas of Ann Arbor are experiencing higher traffic congestion, and it's our experience. And so we feel as though it is being generated by the development, but I think the structural fact is that what you said, Mr. Kahane, that Ann Arbor is a job-generating community, generating more than 1,000 jobs a year, most of those people can't afford to live here, and so what we're seeing is a big increase in commuter traffic. And we need to distinguish between the effects of commuter traffic and actually the possibility that, or the likelihood, that development is mitigating some of that commuter traffic, because we're creating places for people who would otherwise need to drive here. And in that respect, this development is particularly interesting because it's not in downtown, so it won't, it's not in the market that's really expensive downtown, and it has modest-sized apartments, and it's providing a lot of facility for alternate modes of travel. And so this is, as Mr. Adams mentioned, compared to some other things that we're needing to look at, which I feel like are remaining very oriented toward cars, I feel very good about what this development can bring to mitigate the increase of traffic that's usually coming from commuters. So I'm sorry, that started out coherent and a little bit ended out not so much.
Commissioner Weich?
Yeah, so I'll start my comments by asking the petitioner to respond to a couple of the public comments that I heard. So there was a concern around the lighting issues with the project. So the petitioner or those on the Zoom could address that, and then I'll just work through some of the things that I heard from the public comments that I had questions about.
I think we do have the photometric study. Tristan, are you able to pull that up? I mean, our photometric study, we did try to limit to the lowest possible luminescence, you know, for parking in a facility, and we can share that.
And while that is getting pulled up, for staff, this complies with our new regulations for lighting that have to be directional down and not open, and have to meet a certain standard. So we're not just talking bright lights that will bring lighting into the nearby residents, like just unidirectionally, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yes, that's right. They are directional down, preserve the, you know, the night sky as much as possible, and, I mean, you can see the, you know, from the study here that we've had done, it is as minimal as possible.
Okay. The other comment came around the access to Calvin Street, but I don't see anything in the site plan that would attempt to access Calvin Street, so.
There's really no need. Honestly, we are mostly just preserving that space as a buffer to M14.
And then there was a concern around the construction access, so that there was concern from the public commenters that you may try to access the property from Calvin Street with construction vehicles is your plan to just come off of Maple?
Oh, I think that's probably the only way that that could be done, logistically, yeah.
And then I think, Commissioner Dish, you addressed the trees and the wetlands, right? And your questions? So unfortunately, I was going to ask about the parking, which was, why so much parking? Especially when I see the site as it's laid out, I just look and I dream for more housing on that. And if you could just, you or the architects or designers can just speak. I know you reduced it. We don't have any parking requirements anymore, and especially inside the PUD, I think, right? So if you could just talk to us about what you feel like the market is requiring here, because it's still such a large, when you look at the site, and I don't know which, there's a render that has the building plus the parking lot, and you see it, you sort of, I sort of look at it and I go, oh, look, you could put a whole nother housing unit in your parking lot, and we could get probably another 40 units. Did you think about that? So if you could, if you could speak to that.
Sure, sure. We really did try to strike what we felt was an appropriate balance, you know, considering the current market, and also trying to think, you know, forward as far as alternative means of transportation. And that really is why we focused our community center on having, you know, not only bike stores. storage and maintenance, but EV bike parking. But, we did preserve, you know, as much green space. Some of our early plans did look at providing more parking, and we felt that with the bus stop, the fact that most of our residents might be commuting and not be able to use public access to get to their places of employment, that providing, you know, the 65 spaces, and also in consideration of the fact that we have about 95 or 96 beds, and there will be a few staff personnel there as well. So, when you look at total number of possible people, we really are almost closer to, you know, a half parking space per person onsite.
Okay. I wanted to also recommend the Boston post and ring racks for you for your Class C, so that you could get more bikes into it. At least from the render, it looked like it was just a circular hoop. And I think if you use a different post, you can get more bikes into there, and I appreciate that you're going to have a bike space for every unit.
Actually, for every person. We exceed that, so we have up to 100 spots for bikes, I believe, onsite.
And then, when we first saw the project, it was unclear whether the bike parking was going to be at ground level or below ground level, and I think it's at ground level.
It is at ground level, yeah. We did explore where the lockers are currently placed, possibly, you know, and that could still end up having some spillover parking for bikes.
The other question that I had was around, did you consider in your waste management allowing your residents to participate in composting? Because I didn't see it in the plan for it, and especially since you have this extra sort of community center, that could be a place where residents could bring, and since you're servicing the units four times a week for trash pickup and twice a week for recycling, I wondered where the conversation went with composting, because this is, a lot of folks who could participate in that program.
We do have an opportunity on the site, and we did consider that suggestion from previous meetings. And if you look at where the solid waste is currently located, there is a bay that if Ann Arbor at any time in the future, you know, is to add routine composting pickup, there is an opportunity to expand and provide that there.
Okay. And then, my last question is, and I don't know if it's for your consultant, your engineering consultant or your designers, if you could just talk a little bit about your plans with the geothermal, because we hear a lot from developers, we are exploring or we're interested in, but those things don't always materialize. And, you know, I think from my remembering this first presentation to where we are today, there seems to be a lot of improvements based on some of the feedback that we gave, including the increase of solar as well as battery storage, you know, the reduction in the parking. You still have a 50% of open space, so as I ask this question, you know, I ask it in full faith that I think you all heard a lot of our initial feedback, and you made significant improvements to the site plan, and I sit here grateful for what we're looking at. But, I would love to hear where you are in this evaluation phase. Is it, are you really?
Yeah, no, no, it is a very, it is an ongoing process, and there is potential. So, we do have a boring layout that includes approximately 25 possible boring sites.
And are those, what, are they 500 feet wells?
They are projected to be 500 at this point. So, you know, we know that the connectivity with the soils in Ann Arbor is good enough to produce it, and approximately 25 borings from our energy modeling would help to offset a substantial amount of, you know, heating and cooling usage. So, you know, depending on cost and where they end up in relation to the other items in the project, we are very interested in, you know, providing that if possible. You know, the solar and our commitment to solar, you know, we've really had from day one, and then geothermal was a way to kind of supplement that if possible.
Those are my questions.
Commissioner Mills?
I thought Commissioner, so I snuck in. Okay. I will do what I typically do, which is, when we do a PUD, I like to say, because we are making a new zoning jurisdiction effectively, see, compare the site plan that we got to kind of what's in the PUD regulations, just so people can understand if things change along the way, kind of what the options are. And I'll say that this is really close in a lot of respects, but just thought I would, because I did the kind of analysis, point out for commissioners and the public where there are differences. One is on parking. So, commissioners may have a different opinion than members of the public, but what the PUD regs say is that it needs to be no more than 75 spots. So, currently shown on here is fewer than what the PUD would allow, but I, but just put that in perspective in terms of it's pretty close. The site plan that we see is also, the PUD would require 58 bicycle parking spots, and what we're seeing is closer to 80, or at least that's what the kind of table says.
Okay, yep.
And so, they don't have to build that much, but I'm glad to see that they are. I often do a comparison in terms of height, and that is like almost dead on, and setbacks. And so, for the east setback and the west setback, those are within a foot or two, kind of of what that is, but on the north side, it is allowed to be 100 feet, and it looks like it's 120. So, it could go a little bit to the north. Similarly, on the south, it's allowed to be 75 feet from the property line, and it's currently at 85. So, but generally speaking, it's pretty close, and I think it gives a little bit of wiggle room in case things need to shift over time. So, again, I'm usually looking for the like loopholes there, and I don't see anything of what would be quite different, that if this is approved, if we approve the PUD, but for some reason this project doesn't get built, that another site plan could come in. The other thing that we haven't heard too much yet, and that I wanted to like make sure is in there, is associated with the sustainability elements, and that is very clearly spelled out. So, the solar, the all-electric, those things are, no matter what happens, like that is now tied to the PUD regulations, which I want to thank you. We, you may have read in the newspaper, kind of often have to pull developers along, and it's really heartening to see a project come before us that has not just considered electric appliances, but an all-electric HVAC system. I'm curious about how, particularly associated with that, what you see as the market? Like, how come you see this as viable and we're hearing from others that it's not?
Oh, that's a good question. You know, I think we're, you know, every developer probably approaches a project with a different pro forma and set of goals, and we just felt like this was attainable with our current pro forma and that we could make it work, so.
And you're not worried about losing renters because of their electric bills?
Always a concern, of course, but that's where the geothermal discussion really kind of set in, that we could, you know, we had heard that, yes, the electric bills are generally higher because of, you know, the all-electrification, and so maybe we can offset that with the geothermal if feasible. And so, you know, over a long enough time period, you know, the financials work, so.
And you're not worried about getting financing for this because some banker's not going to think that you're not going to get renters?
You know, it's primarily a HUD-based lending, you know, so there's a 40-year AM on that, and they give you two additional years for construction. So, again, that additional 12 years helps the pro forma.
Great. I'm curious, will there be any natural gas hookup here? Will you have a connection to natural gas?
The only possible need we would need is if the flow test for water were to not be sufficient, which in talking with Fire Marshal Redman, it's more than adequate, and then we would need it to pump for the fire, you know, to have a working pump for the fire suppression, because we can't use a battery for that, per code.
Oh, well, that seems like code needs to change.
So, that would be the only reason that we would have to, but otherwise, it's not necessary.
Okay. And just, not for you, but for staff, in the future, I think, to the extent, now I really want to look into this code issue, but.
I know, I'm sorry.
But also, like, for, as we're talking to future petitioners, especially about electric, and as we're thinking about where, how we're thinking about the infrastructure that's going in, this idea of like not having a natural gas hookup, this, not this issue withstanding, that's not standing in my way here, but I think that that's just one of the things that would give people further comfort, that there's not going to be some way that natural gas would be snuck in in the future. Anyway, that's, that code issue is very interesting. Okay, let's see. I also had a question about the intention for 1921 Kelvin, but it sounds to me like actually what you're practicing here is a bit, a little bit like cluster development. You've got, you've got a larger site, and so you're taking kind of the density, I'm seeing some nods in case you can't see this, the density that would be allowed across that acreage, putting it on the part that is not high, like that's not wetlands, and effectively, just for neighbors, like because we're tying the amount of development that you have here to the entire size of that acreage, has the effect of not allowing development on that Kelvin parcel. So, in some ways, it's, this is like preserving that for the future.
That's exactly right.
Is that, am I, and also, is there any, is there any loophole in the PUD that would effectively, like, am I reading that right, in the intention in that?
I think that you're reading that right, that the PUD supplemental regs don't have a language that explicitly accommodates that kind of additional square footage of use.
Okay. And again, the kind of open space area that's required, they're getting that on the part that's off of Kelvin. So, to just be clear, like, they have, that has to stay open space in order to be in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Yes, and I want to add that any amendment to a PUD goes not only before you, but all the way back to City Council.
It is a rezoning, and so it has to, it goes to City Council. Yeah. So, this is also why we look at this now, because like we are writing this for a long time. The final thing that I'm going to put out there, and maybe if the next person is an architect to address, I noticed in the supplemental regs, and even in the presentation, there was a talk about IFIS as the facade, and I don't know what that is, but I, and we haven't talked about it on Planning Commission in a while, but once upon a time, it came up a lot, and it also came up as something that we didn't want, and I just looked, and we don't allow it downtown. And so, I'm going to pump that to an architect to say, is that a good thing that we are saying explicitly in the supplemental regs that IFIS is allowed as the, as building material? So, I'm going to, that, but all things considered, I really appreciate what the balancing act that's done here, the, I mean, this idea kind of of preserving some part of the city and taking that development and putting it on, I mean, this is the, this is, this is kind of a main corridor here coming into the city, doing that with one curb cut and less parking than what, than what some, that, less than one parking spot per unit. I mean, again, I think you know that there are differing opinions about parking here, but I think that kind of the, I really appreciate the way you've balanced that, and particularly, I appreciate the not having to twist arms or pull teeth associated with the sustainability elements.
Thank you.
I hope geothermal works out here, but also, I'm really comfortable that this project is one that's set for the future, as is, and I think that geothermal will make that only more affordable, like, oh, if it works out, and one that, you know, people who want to live in a sustainable building will look towards, so, thanks.
Tristan, Carolina, do you want to address the comments on IFIS?
Yes, so, I, I'm not the, we're not the licensed architects. Bob Overheiser is, but I can speak to the benefits of IFIS as well as our intention of it being semi-flexible. We're proposing IFIS because it gets you R-value, so it gets you a better envelope insulation rating. It's basically a foam with a sort of Stucco finish, that's, and it's a panelized system. So, there have been conversations previously about the weathering of IFIS, and so we are limiting, if we are going to choose IFIS, to the top floor of the building. This would make it easy to, if we needed to repaint, or if we needed to patch or fix, it is only a single floor, significantly less maintenance, it's not coming close to the ground, so we don't have any water possibly infiltrating from below. And we're, our compromise is, it's between IFIS and Stucco, basically, depending on the cost of it, but it just makes, it's a, it just gives you some R-value, which is really nice for the electricity costs, so that's our thought process.
Thanks. Because we just finished that, I will also say, we also don't allow vinyl siding, which our architect tells us is, tends to have a lot of life in it, and there can be a lot of sustainability benefits in vinyl, even though there is not, I'm, yes. So, I'll just say that this is one where, where it just caught my eye and maybe kind of what people prefer for some reasons, like we might want to reconsider for other reasons in terms of how prescriptive we are about materials that are used. So, thanks.
Commissioner Sovae, did you, did you want to weigh in?
I'm not on the design review board for a reason. I like, I'll, I'll wait, like, I agree, it has its pros and cons relative to instantly, like, there is an ease of maintenance actually, and an economy of maintenance when required as well. It has some kind of performance standard, like, to the building, it also is an economical material, which you'll see requires, but when we're talking about affordable housing and density and trying to meet certain markets, we want construction costs, I mean, we've seen this for the past, this project come before us over the past year and a half, and I'm sure your construction prices have inflated, and to make this project continue to be possible, these are the types of materials that might need to kind of have the compromises in the project, so on that front. Like, I am fine with it. It's really, I would say, about the application more than anything that can give the pros and cons to a project design.
Anybody else?
Can I keep going?
Oh, yeah, of course. I'm sorry, I was confused about the way that you. I will add that you can do diesel or propane storage tank to be for an onsite generator if your batteries don't supply, so that you don't have a gas connection for the code requirement. And so, that would eliminate, and you would have a reserve of this fuel tank to meet those emergency requirements. So, that's a way to get around the actual gas connection and the kind of, I guess, tease of trying to use it for something else in the course. I love pogo holes and things too, and really kind of what I actually compare this to is TC-1 as well, and I think like this parking ratio is a little bit more in terms of the footprint ratio that we talked about for surface parking to what we're looking at in TC-1. So, more parking really wouldn't meet our TC-1 goals in several ways. And with that, you know, we're looking at completely exposed parking, and I know when we looked at this, just for kind of design review, there was green roof, and you have a lot of green space, so reutilizing that for solar. And I think I just want to add the, two comments. One, e-bikes are heavy, so doing wall mount means that that bike room might not be very usable if you're functioning it for e-bikes. So, I would actually recommend looking at maybe Class B bike parking for e-bikes to include in the site, and one of the things that we do have in our ordinance as well, staff, I'm wrong, is you do not need to come back to, for site planning if you want to do covered parking with solar panels. So, you can basically have carports with additional solar panels to provide the residents or any staff onsite who don't want snow on their car, and to collect more energy onsite with solar, which would also be a nice coverage for e-bikes to have that Class B parking as well. So, I think those are my main ads, was, you know, the, some of the general kind of form and function relative to TC-1, to see like what would we get if this was that instead of a PUD. But overall, I would say, yeah, there's some improvement on the parking area. We understand the kind of balancing act that you're. the kind of balancing act that you're playing, but just for your knowledge in the future, that is a possibility to continue to improve it.
Thank you.
Appreciate the project, thank you.
Commissioner Clark, then Commissioner Lee.
If I can just add on to the parking comment, I was just, I don't know if it's probably outside our scope what we can require, but curious if you've looked into any heat island mitigation strategies for the parking lot. I noticed there was just kind of those two small islands, just curious if anything like light surfaces reflect, you know, if anything's been looked into, and if not, just encourage you to maybe look at parking lot design and impervious surfaces where possible and stuff like that.
Tom, did you want to speak there? I know the landscape architecture, you know, has considered various opportunities with the landscape islands.
I can speak to the fact that with our parking lot layout, we've really worked to condense a lot of different elements of the site, including stormwater management and utilities and conveyance of stormwater. And that being our main area to collect stormwater in underground, doesn't give us a lot of space internal to the parking lot for trees, so we tried to preserve trees on the outside of the parking lot and so on. I can't speak to whether or not the design team has looked at lighter surfaces and so on for the parking lot, but that is something certainly we can look into for that.
Anything else? Commissioner Lee.
Sure, thank you. To everyone that spoke, thank you. I think civic engagement is really important, so I just want to recognize you guys showing up and giving us your side of things, and change is, I think, often difficult, and growth isn't easy. So I want to make sure that, petitioner, if you could please confirm, so there isn't any proposed access to Kelvin, formal or informal, so even if there's not like a direct way to it.
I mean, there would be no residents accessing the parcel. Obviously, you know, we own the parcel, we may need to access it ourselves for ownership, but not for the residents or for construction.
Gotcha, understood. On the staging for construction, could you confirm that it's coming off of Maple?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Staging for construction?
Yes.
And the thoroughfare of construction access is going to be off Maple and off no other road? Can you confirm that?
Yes, that is my current understanding, yes.
Okay, great. And then any disruption of service, is there anything that's anticipated for any of the neighbors?
I don't think so. I don't think the road is currently, you know, other than electric and gas, I don't think it's being serviced by any Ann Arbor utilities.
Gotcha. Are there any impacts of Woodrow being contemplated here, just to make sure that we're?
No, 1921 shares, access off of Woodrow, but it would probably be primarily off of Calvin.
Gotcha.
And I think the only thing that we're proposing there, and Tom, feel free to jump in, is, you know, some tree plantings, you know, the building of a small berm, and, you know, that's the only construction traffic, you know, as related to that in our site plan.
Gotcha, understood. That helps. In evaluating a PUD, I think obviously the two main questions we have to answer are, can this be accomplished in any other zoning code or classification? I think the answer is no, just based on the unique characteristics. The other question that we have to contemplate here, do the physical characteristics, design features and amenities provide a beneficial effect for the city? Is there innovation in land use? And are we furthering the stated goals and physical character of the adopted land use? So during this period, I did review the 2009 Land Use Settlement Plan. For this particular west subsection, I did note that there is two kind of, one primary and an alternative, which is either single family or a comprehensive development package. I believe this complies with the comprehensive development package. I think the concept of strengthening non-motorized transit is very important. I hear you guys on traffic concerns. I did just check MDOT, or I'm sorry, SEMCOG's traffic, it's the average daily traffic count. It's about 2,800 cars, 79 units, 95 beds, we're talking about like maybe a 2.5%. It's not going to be a significant increase when there's 2,800 cars. Tom, did you have something to add?
Tiny, that's all I wanted.
Right, right. With 2,800, and then really on the roundabout, there's about 8,000 cars traversing there on an average daily traffic. So I just want to make sure, to indicate the relative scale of adding 80 units, or 79. I just want to be, again, very mindful, because it is, it's a lot to come here and speak and, you know, to be civically engaged. So again, I really appreciate that. The way we can improve this, especially given the jobs and housing imbalance, is strengthening non-motorized transit. So I think the contribution to the RRFD crosswalks, that's Rapidly Flashing Beacon, basically crosswalks, is important. Connectivity and porosity to bike lanes is also critical. I think some of the other commissioners spoke about that. So I think that's actually a really useful thing to try and encourage, for example, the folks that, if this passes, and this goes to City Council, this isn't the last stop, that they have a second means, a non-motorized means of accessing amenities down on Stadium. So overall, this checks a lot of boxes for me. So you have 15% affordable units, 12. It's fully electric, you guys are exploring geothermal vertical wells, they're using the buffer 1921 Kelvin. So in evaluating this from a PUD standpoint, I do find that this complies with pretty much everything that is intended to be the purpose of PUD, so I will be supporting this, while making sure that we recognize all of the concerns that the residents have. Change isn't easy, and I want to make sure that we respect the voices that we hear here tonight. So, yep, that's it for me, thank you.
Anybody else?
I just have, I agree with what my colleagues are saying, I feel very grateful that you're going to, you're really doing it for sustainability, it's just, it's really nice for us to have somebody that's kind of leading the way with this, instead of us having to kind of chase people. My only question is that you have these extra parcels, and it looks like the one on, the kind of furthest one west has some really quite big, beautiful trees in it, and I see that your current kind of pedestrian amenity zone that's outside, there's a courtyard in front of the building to the south, but there's also this little zone to the north, and because you have this like point where all of your properties come together, is there any way to allow for a path for residents to have access just to walk through the woods? And it's something that, you know, maybe the neighbors, probably they currently walk through those woods with, but this is a property that you own, and it seems like it could be a really gorgeous area to be able to take a walk if they want to, and I'm just wondering if they're, you know, if you all have thought about that at all? Because it's an area that, you know, that is part of, now part of this PUD, and is something that your residents could potentially enjoy, and, you know, who knows, maybe other neighbors would be able to enjoy walking through there now, as well. So I'm just curious if you all considered that at all?
Yep, so we have looked at that opportunity, we are using that area to plant some trees and to spoil some soil, so that we're not hauling that offsite as well. We are working with MDOT, so there's another component to this project that is, in my opinion, a community benefit. There's a water main that is being extended along from Foss through MDOT right away, north of our building. We've been working with MDOT to at least get to the point where they're ready for detailed plans of that, and that would be a time when maybe we could ask for an opportunity to have, gain access to that property. We don't want to disturb the neighbors by accessing through their property or down their streets and so on, so if that became an opportunity from MDOT, then maybe we could have a trail with a loop there or something like that. But our goal right now is for that to be a buffer for our neighbors to the M14 and the ramps.
Okay. All righty, are we ready for a vote?
So the motions are unmodified from as presented. Commissioner Gibranle?
Yes.
Commissioner Sovee?
Yes.
Commissioner Dish?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries, this recommendation will advance to the City Council.
Thank you very much. There's one more piece of our regular business here. Do people feel like they need a break before this one, or I'm seeing yes and no, any?
He'll just quietly suffer.
Five?
Five-minute break, okay, all righty. We'll come back at quarter tonight then.
We'll come back at quarter tonight then. Okay, let's get back to our meeting. We are now on item 8C. If folks are -- we're starting the meeting again, so if conversations could move to the side. Excuse me, public. We're starting the meeting, so if you all want to continue talking, if you could. All righty, so this is for item 8C, 221561, which is 3860 Research Park Drive Special Exception Use and Site Plan. This is a designated marijuana consumption facility that is being added to an existing provisioning center. Let's see. Do we have a petitioner presentation? You have up to 10 minutes to tell us about your project.
Good evening, Commissioner, and thank you for your time. I'm Benjamin Joffe. Beside me is the applicant, Mr. Jarboe. I'm located at 334 East Washington Street in Ann Arbor, Michigan. You know, we believe that the application materials submitted really do speak for themselves. We did want to touch on just a couple of questions that Mr. Chang did ask us. He was not available tonight. One of those was going to be on any odors that may be produced by people consuming in the facility. You know, we do utilize carbon filters and negative air pressure. Therefore, all the air gets treated, and none of it goes through the doors. So basically, if you think negative air pressure, it's sucking air from the outside. It all gets treated, and then it gets released through the top after it's gone through a filtration process in order to alleviate any possible odor issues. You know, the -- and this is one point that I'm not going to go on. You know, the facility will be within those hours, operating in those hours as called for in Chapter 96, which is only till 9:00 p.m. I will, you know, say right now, if there's any way for this commission to approve us to go past those hours, that would not be in line with the ordinance. But I do believe that's one of those things that's just in the ordinance that basically left over from past of not having provisioning centers open until 9:00 p.m. If a designated consumption lounge were open past 9:00 p.m., that still does not mean that people can get cannabis after 9:00 p.m. They'd only be able to consume it because we still have those hours that would go after that facility. Other than that, we think this is, you know, a pretty good use to put in this area. Obviously, it's adjacent and connects to the provisioning center. So we believe, again, those materials speak for themselves. We're here to, you know, answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do have a staff presentation. I wanted to thank the petitioner for mentioning the fact that staff had asked for additional information regarding the operation of the consumption facility. So thank you very much for presenting that. I would like to summarize the staff recommendation. First, indicating that Chris Chang was the planner who worked on this project. Chris is out of the office this week, so I volunteered to give the presentation. Staff recommendation. Staff recommends that the special exception use be approved with conditions subject to planning commission consideration because the proposed special exception use is of such size, location, and character as to be compatible with the zoning district in which the site is situated, and the location and size of the proposed use, its nature and intensity, the site layout and access, and effect on the proposed use on public services would not be hazardous or inconvenient to the neighborhood nor unduly conflict with the normal traffic of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. All righty. So this is when we have a public hearing. This is an opportunity for people to speak up to three minutes about this project. We'll first call on individuals present, of which there are none at this point, so we will be looking to remote participants who would press *9 if listening by phone or use the raised hand feature of viewing through the web link. For phone access, call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand using the last three digits of your phone number or by name. You'll hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sound so that we may hear you clearly. Please state your name and address at the beginning of the comments. Is there anybody that is in line remotely?
There is none.
Okay. All righty, so I have the fun of reading. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? You are hiding behind the monitor. No, no, from my point of view. I'm sorry, I didn't notice you. You're good, though? You're not here for that. Sorry about that. No, I'm glad you said something because he's right in line with my -- Yeah, that's -- thank you, Commissioner White, for that. Just happened to be right out of my line of sight. Okay, so I will read the motion, which is quite lengthy. Whenever it will be reminded, I'm sure, of the old days of us passing the provisioning centers. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission, after hearing all interested persons and reviewing all relevant information, including an accompanying site plan, finds the petition substantially meets the standards in Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, Section 5.29.5.D., Special Exceptions, and Section 5.16.3.G., Marijuana Facility, and therefore approves the 3860 Research Park Drive Special Exception Use for Designated Marijuana Consumption Facility. This approval is based on the following findings. One, the proposed use will be consistent with the C2B Business District zoning, which provides for residential office and commercial uses, including special exceptions for designated marijuana consumption facilities. Two, the proposed use will not adversely impact traffic, pedestrians, bicyclists, circulation, or road intersections based on the location. South Ashley Street. That doesn't seem quite right. South Ashley Street? Are we on Research Park Drive?
Research Park Drive.
Okay, so we will strike the Research South Ashley Street and say Research Park Drive. And I presume that you can correct that in the motion. Provides access to the site, and the proposed use is consistent with other surrounding uses' traffic impact. Number three, a site plan documenting the existing and proposed conditions of the site has been submitted as part of this application. Number four, through documentation submitted by the petitioner regarding waste disposal, inventory tracking, security, and other methods of operation at the facility, the designated marijuana consumption facility will be operated in manner that will not have an adverse impact on the neighboring properties or area and will not have a detrimental impact on natural features. This special exemption use approval is based on the following conditions. One, the petitioner obtaining and maintaining both a State of Michigan marijuana license and a City of Ann Arbor marijuana permit and providing documentation to planning services within three years of the city planning commission approval date of this petition. Number two, the petitioner operating marijuana business at this address within three years of the city planning commission approval date of this petition. Number three, the designated marijuana consumption facility may only be used by customers and their guests of the provisioning center retail at 3860 Research Park Drive. Number four, the special exemption use may occupy no more than 4,560 square feet at 3860 Research Park Drive, and that the Ann Arbor Planning Commission approves the attached site plan, which demonstrates compliance with the applicable special exception use standards, as no development which would otherwise require site plan approval has been proposed. Okay, that is the motion moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Sauvay. We are in discussion. Commissioner Mills.
I have a question about the hours. I didn't quite follow. So if you can say again, and then I'll ask for clarification. So my reading is that the motion that was read doesn't say anything about hours, so now I'm a little confused.
Yeah, so and that's probably a vestige of me coming up here for a bunch of the provisioning center approvals, but we do have an ordinance that says all facilities may not basically, you know, be open to the public, I think, between 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m.
Got it.
So the way the ordinance is currently written, the facility can't be open after 9:00 p.m. So that would be the only thing that we would be asking to change, as I don't think it was really the intent of anybody to shut down a designated consumption facility at 9:00 p.m. But it may have been the intent to shut down provisioning centers in places that are actually available to purchase cannabis at at that time.
Got it. Staff, is that within zoning or is that within licensing?
It's within licensing.
Okay. Thank you. So that's not in our purview. I was gonna say, I don't remember that in our zoning ordinance. Okay, so that's not within our purview, but also what I'm reading is that the -- if we approve -- or yes, do we approve? We recommend -- we approve the special exception use. Because we don't say anything about hours, if that changes, then presumably those hours could change too. Is that right?
That's correct.
Mr. Leonard? Okay, super.
If the special use added a specific condition that reflected those hours, then that would not be the case. But by essentially being silent, the regulation of time refers to that chapter of the city code.
Yeah, and I'm comfortable with that, that there's not hours necessarily stated in here. I personally am comfortable, but just want to -- I bring that up for everyone else. Overall, I'll just say, like, the idea of consumption facilities and provisioning centers being co-located or near each other, I think, makes a whole lot of sense, so I'm supportive of this. I'm just curious. I think maybe it was in the staff report that this would be the second one, but I'm curious if we know if that's actually operational.
It is not. The first one approved is not operational.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Commissioner White.
So this was the -- this site was the first meeting that I attended when I was appointed to the planning commission, and I remember this site. And I just asked staff whether the provisioning center is open, which it isn't. So now we are being asked to approve the consumption, even though the provisioning was never open. We are -- we also had a list of items that we asked this petitioner to do, but I don't know where those are vis a vis this conversation. And so I'd just like to get some clarity because I am confused.
Yeah, good memory. So the provisioning center is under a similar clock, if you will. That three-year that you see in the motion this evening, it comes out of our special exception use standards, which provides a three-year window for a special exception use to be established. The provisioning center retailer at that location is on a similar clock that has to be established and opened by August 3, 2024, if my records are correct. As part of that, there was some conditions to that. They had submitted some revised architectural elevations and a revised sidewalk connection on that site. Those are incorporated into the approved plan, and those changes will have to be conceived prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy for the provisioning center. Likewise, because this approval is tied to the provisioning center, those would also cascade to ensure that those same things are, of course, completed at the time an occupancy permit is granted for this use if approved by the planning commission.
So if I can, if I'm permitted to ask more questions of you, Mr. Leonard, since you're answering. We also had some site plan adjustments. I think there was something related to where the waste container is. There was like some kind of -- there were concerns around the trees, the lighting, the signage, the ground floor activation. And so like, how does that all fit into what we're seeing today? So is that already on a rider? You're managing that. They have to meet those requirements. Once those requirements are met, then this consumption center could open, but if those previous requirements are not met, then the consumption, should we approve it tonight, cannot open?
Because the consumption facility can only be tied to the provisioning center, they wouldn't be able to operate that business unless those changes were provided as part of the provisioning center approval.
And then all of those changes are going to the planning manager by code, so they won't come back to the table.
Correct, and they've been reviewed and approved. They have provided modified architectural elevations, provided a modified sidewalk layout. There was discussion about activation of the front door. There was no specific requirement as part of the architectural elevations. I think an awning is being added to add a visual cue to that being a doorway, but there's no requirement that it be functional. So I think -- and I'm sorry, I recall the discussion about the solid waste, that it was in the right place, but it was accessed from a different direction or something. But those -- my recollection is that all of those standards have been submitted via revised plans. I have approved those. Those are now requirements prior to that issuance of occupancy.
Okay, and that wasn't in the staff report that I have, right? Like, I did not --
Because this is strictly to the consumption facility.
I did not misread any of that.
Nope.
Right, okay. Okay, I think those are my questions.
Commissioner Sauvay.
Thank you. This takes a lot of mechanical, a lot. And I haven't seen anything on the site plan, and the elevations don't show anything on the roof views from the one side, so I guess I'm wondering, have you sized the mechanical ventilation equipment yet, and do you have a plan for its placement? And do you have any elevations to show us where it goes and if we can see it?
So, yep, HVACs all been laid out. It's part of the building structure. I don't have an elevation with me that could see it. It's been our understanding right now that that top of anything will be below that roof line. It's my understanding.
Okay. I mean, it's not my understanding because we don't have any elevation drawings as part of the site plan. So I mean, I would honestly kind of be willing to put another condition on this, similar to what we saw for the provisioning center. That staff needs to kind of review and see elevations and screening if it goes on the roof. And I see it's right at two setbacks and then the parking, so I can't imagine it landing on the ground to service. I guess from staff, it couldn't land in any vicinity to the ground based on how the site plan is, correct?
Mechanical equipment up to a certain size can be placed on the ground. It would depend on the size of that equipment. I would anticipate it being installed on the roof.
But not within the setback?
No.
There's like minor area, but like, we've sized one of these, just for everybody's context, and they're the size of a large truck. They get very, very big. Yeah, for a 2,000-square-foot consumption lounge to meet the requirements, like a cigar lounge, these things get very big. And the carbon filters can be up to two feet thick to filter this. They're very significant. And so structurally, this thing sitting on the roof, and I mean, it was eight feet tall. So I mean, I would really want to make sure that there's screening around this, that it's setback, and it's not visible from the road because, I mean, we worked through the discussion last time, all about the kind of activation and elevations of this thing, and to really just kind of park large mechanical on top of it would be really unfortunate with all the effort that's been to improve the project. So staff, would it just be conditional on staff review of elevations to meet screening?
So I want to be clear, I don't have the expertise of the size of those units. From what you're saying, if they are that size, I think it would be a screening. I think that they would be visible. I don't -- if -- and so I would suggest that if you wanted that condition that we would add, you would add a condition that required architectural screening of any mechanical equipment installed on the roof to be approved by the planning manager, or if that's something, a detail that you want to see before you're comfortable with this, then I would recommend that the petitioner would have to supply that when we come back to the planning commission. I'm happy to do it, but I want to be clear, from the sound of it, I'd probably want to start from the position that it's likely going to be a screening treatment as opposed to anything else.
Yeah, tucked away, yeah. And I think that like, screening is kind of a continuous aesthetic that matches the elevation instead of connections in the mechanical variances of the unit.
If I recall, I think some composite wood product is being added to the architectural elevations. That's probably a really appropriate palette for some sort of screening for mechanical equipment as well.
Is that your understanding of your engineering at this point, of the scale of this?
Yeah, I would say that it's not the scale of the size of that you're describing. You know, I would say in the cannabis industry, being a very new industry, there's many ways to skin a cap, so we haven't been looking at a machine that large. Again, we're going with the negative air pressure that sucks it up and many carbon filters throughout the facility, including in the HVAC.
Yep.
We could lay out the carbon filters inside also, so.
Right, yeah, it's processing, you know, it's an old technology because cigar bar lounges and things have been around, and it's meeting the air quality of the mechanical code through that similar code because it's a smoking lounge relative to marijuana or any other sort of smoking consumption, that you have to meet that requirement for this occupancy load and square footage, and so they get very, very big. So I'll open it up for any other discussion before I make the proposal, to see if anybody else is interested in things, but I do plan on making that proposal as an addendum to this.
Commissioner Lee.
Sure, thank you. Interesting enough, you know, I was taking a look, it does say that they're looking to do two 5-ton HVAC units. And just kind of like, back of the napkin, I'm like, one, it's 900 square feet per ton, and I'm like, huh. Like, it doesn't seem sufficient, I guess, for the 9,000 square feet.
The two 5-ton units are for the first floor only.
Okay, so it's 4,500 --
Yeah, so when we started this with Chris Chang, he told us just to give him a floor layout before, so a lot of the mechanical hasn't been laid out yet.
Gotcha.
But we will have another two 5-ton units for the second floor also.
Okay, gotcha, because like, restaurant requirements are gonna be, you know, like, a ton per 350 square feet or 250. We want to see at least, you know, 300 square feet per ton kind of for even office use. So I was like, 450 square feet per ton. I was like, I don't know, you might want more HVAC than that. That's just me just giving you kind of like, here's some. The only thing from the special exception use approval that I have a question on is, how are you, from like a consumption lounge standpoint, what is your anticipation on how people get there and leave there? Like, is it gonna be -- I mean, not that it's something you can control, I'm just talking practically. I just have a question. It looks like an auto-centric destination, so I'm just, are you gonna give out like Uber vouchers or something? I don't know, it's a bar, basically. So I'm just asking practically, not that it's gonna, you know, I just want to be mindful of how people are using space, getting to it, leaving.
Absolutely, and one of the main draws that we do see about this particular location is its proximity to hotels and out-of-towners, so we do expect actually those that visit to be many of those people that are staying at the hotels that are surrounding the area.
Gotcha.
We will have a discount set up with a staybridge next door for anybody who can't drive and wants to stay there, and it will be a deep discount for them.
Okay, gotcha, understood. Yeah, overall, I mean, I will say that some of the build-out requirements that these folks have are really high-end retail levels, so I imagine they're going to be very concerned about good aesthetics, essentially, when it comes to HVAC, et cetera. So my only question was just regarding kind of the operational aspect, but I think that's about it for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? And then is there any adjusting we need to do? Go ahead.
Okay, so we'll see if this sticks, but from my -- Okay. So we'll, we'll see if this sticks. But from my, from, from my end, thank you, Brett, for giving me some language. Um, I propose, um, an addendum to the proposal that says, "The installation of any mechanical equipment, uh, will be on the rooftop and shall be screened in a composite wood material matching the approved architectural elevations to be approved by planning manager."
Okay. Just second, second. Okay. Sure. Moved by Commissioner Sovey and seconded by Commissioner Waich.
May-
Have a, um, quick vote on the amendment?
May-
No. Hang on.
May I interject? And I'm, I'm sorry to interject. I know.
Not yet. Sorry. So we get to have a discussion if that's-
Yes.
That's what we all-
Yeah. Sorry. Is there any, any discussion on-
Want to ask-
Right.
-a question that they can answer, but right now we have a, a open question.
Yep. Any discussion on this?
Oh. Can I-
Go ahead, Commissioner Lee.
Can you just read that amendment one more time?
Nice and slow. Um, so I propose an additional, uh, condition which states the installation of any mechanical equipment will be on the rooftop and shall be screened in a composite wood material matching the approved architectural elevations to be approved by the planning manager.
Should it read external? Like, that's not to say that you can't put a mechanical equipment in the building, of course.
Correct. Yeah. Uh, yeah. Uh, like, eh, any installed mechanical equipment on the rooftop.
And then is it appropriate for me to yield my time for, uh, I'd like to hear from the petitioner on their thought regarding that.
But I need to approve the change that she just made.
Friendly?
Good with it.
Okay.
Okay.
And that you could ask a question.
Sure. What do you guys think about this?
Yeah. So that would be the one, because the building is still under construction, right? And, and, and as we all know, construction can change in anything. So we would ask as part of the amendment, um, unless this is absolutely needs to be on the roof, if it can just be properly screened if it's on the premises of the property in case we run into something or they say, look, it's, it's going to cost you $800,000 to put this thing on the roof because of X, Y, and Z, right? Whereas you'd be able to save this to put on the ground. So we would just ask rather than just tie us into the roof because we are still under construction, that we do have proper screening that meets the architectural standards of the approved site plan.
Gotcha. Um.
Commissioner Waich?
So if what the petitioner is saying is possible, wouldn't that change the site plan? Because we would be putting, we'd be changing some area of the site plan and then we would have to re-see that site plan with the mechanical on the ground.
Yeah, I would, um, yeah, personally I wouldn't. This particular site, it's sort of, it's very exposed on two front edges. So, um, and the way that the, the petitioner, um, or, or the site was developed, I should say, uh, was laid out, I don't see a lot of flexibility for necessarily appropriate places for ground mounted mechanical equipment nearby that building. The spaces, because the building is pretty much ice, it's pretty much surrounded by the two right of ways.
Yep.
And the parking lot. And so my, I guess my instinct would be that based on your conversation last time around about the activation and the street presence of that building, I don't see a lot of opportunity for easy installation of mechanical equipment on the ground.
So we-
So, so I guess my preference would be to keep it there. They could always come back with a revised plan, um, if it's determined not possible. But I think that the, the rooftop is a, it's a pretty, I don't want to say convenient, because there might be costs, there might be building, there might be structural factors. But I think that's probably the preferential place to add a lot of mechanical equipment if necessary.
Okay. So then, um, if I could-
Please.
So right now, the, the building is constructed. Are you, because I, I'm, I'm misunderstanding, I guess I, I didn't understand what you meant when you said it's still, I understand that you may be building out the interior, but your construction is complete, right? Your exterior construction except for, uh, facial or the facade is complete. Is that correct?
Yes. The, the outside is basically complete. And just, just to ask, we, we have roughed in most of, most of the mechanical-
Okay.
For, for everything to go on the roof. What I just don't want to do is be tied into it and then find out in a year or two that maybe we need to add a smaller unit or something to the side.
Well, you wouldn't, it, and, and this is where I need staff to clarify. You can't do that right now because you'd have to, it would change your site plan because you'd be adding something to the site plan that is already there and it would hit a certain threshold that would require a site plan revision.
It would depend on this, it would depend on the size. Recently, the planning commission city council did adopt some amendments that provide some flexibility up to 300 square feet.
Right. So if anything exceeds 300 square feet, you've got to submit a new site plan to the planning manager and then it has to come here to get approved. So I'm, I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying so that we can get our motion to fit what we want and doesn't inconvenience you? If, are we on the same page? Or do you feel like there's something we're missing to pick up from Commissioner Lee's? What do you think about this question?
I'm, I'm friendly to what I'm hearing. Um, I do have a different question actually entirely. So.
Okay. But before you do that, can I, just from the petitioner, are, are we on the same page? Like, it, it's my understanding that the way the building is situated and what we have already asked for will prohibit putting this mechanical on the ground in any way that would sort of work.
So, so what I'm asking for is the flexibility in the future in case like, and, and it could be anything. And the first thing that comes to mind is a mini split, right? Which is not going to have an outside presence of, of greater than 300 square feet, right? So it's things like that, right? It's a new building. We don't know exactly how things are going to go. Um, you know, maybe we find that an area of the building is not being cooled, um, as we had hoped, right? So then we may be supplementing air conditioning or, or any of the HVAC there. And what we, you know, we wouldn't be, we, we certainly don't, uh, look to be supplementing in, in gigantic or, or very large areas, right? If we did, that would obviously have to go up on the roof. But if we did have something smaller, then we'd just like to be able to do that with appropriate screening, um, on the ground without having to come back. And obviously if we were to doing anything larger and we did want to put it on the ground, we are aware that we'd have to come back here before we did that.
Okay. And then Mr. Leonard, is this all good from your point of view? Do we need to amend what we have already proposed?
So what you propose is, is to require screening for mechanical equipment being proposed for the roof.
Correct.
Any other mechanical equipment would be subject to the, both the provisions that are allowed currently and limitations that are allowed currently.
Okay.
So in the event that they were under the threshold where it didn't require site plan review for mechanical equipment, they could place it on the site, subject to any restrictions that it can't be in the, the, the front setback and, and the like. If it were over a certain size, that would automatically then necessitate a revised site plan.
Okay. So we are in line-
Yep.
-with our code?
But to be clear, it's, it is not, it's not, it's not providing any flexibility beyond what the ordinance already provides or restricts.
Exactly. And the petitioner understands that there is no additional flexibility outside of what the code already provides.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Then I'm good with the revision to your motion. And, uh, I think I, that, that was it for me.
I would just like to point out one thing and piggyback to that, that I'm just, um, my observation has been that usually when we're doing site plans, we're not, the, the architecture isn't at the stage where we're really looking at detailed mechanical systems at all. And so it's really not part of the site plan in that way because that usually happens later. So we're just not usually dealing with that. And when we look at renderings and things like, it'd be nice if we had all that, but we really don't in terms of the, the stage at which we normally see things. So this is sort of a, a funny opportunity for us that we don't usually get to be able to see this stuff at this stage because they're coming back for this, this other, this other, um, this other project. So, um, it seems like if they have the room to fit it on the ground and it complies with everything, then they have to screen it. And if, um, and that, that may not be likely in terms of the amount of space that it takes up. We'll see. And, and if they, if they put it on the roof, we have to screen it, which is basically what we're giving them the opportunity to do. Commissioner Lee?
Actually, yep. As far as this particular amendment goes, that, that concludes my comments.
Uh, Commissioner Mills?
I'm curious, again, because we don't talk about mechanicals very often because we hear again and again, we haven't figured it out. What, uh, is there a limitation in, what are, what are the limitations on height associated with mechanicals? And so yes, screening can help it blend in, but if it really is the size of a truck, um, it may be really large. Three foot six by 10 is one that I had previously engineered. Um, so if some, staff could remind us like how that works with the height limit, and I don't know what.
Well, it, um, Mr. Khan, do you know off the top of your head what the property is owned?
C2B.
C2B. And what is the height limit of our C2B district?
I believe it's 550.
So, so the short answer is mechanical equipment counts towards your height.
Okay.
But this two-story building is likely well below the height limit. So there's no height limit concern.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sovey?
That's like, that's what I just want to add. Like, i- if you have room now, structurally engineer and plan for this, like, I, I, I think we know and understand that we're not trying to kind of block you from modifications to split systems and things for comfort in offices and things. But this in terms of air quality and mechanical code for smoking areas is pretty significant. Um, so if it's not planned now, and, and I think it just goes, like, it's a unique kind of circumstance, but also like, we usually look at elevations as part of a site plan's middle and we're not because this is just special exception use in a way. So we actually kind of look at less typically. Um, but that's why we also have a commission full of experts in different areas. Um, so, um, hopefully it's, it's actually kind of to your benefit maybe that you're, you have more awareness and that the kind of quality of the building and kind of attraction from the street front, um, is maintained for the community and your business. So.
Anybody else? Okay. So are we ready to vote on the motion? Okay.
The amendment.
All right. The amendment. Sorry. Sorry.
The amendment.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Alrighty. So now are we ready for a, oh, no, one more.
I, I have a question about the citizen participation. I saw the notice that went out. Was there any engagement with that? Cause I, we, what we're talking about is the fundamental, like special exception use, right? So I'm trying to determine if Staybridge Suites gave you feedback, Holiday Inn, and there's Taco Bell across the street. They're probably like, yeah. But, um, but I'm just wondering like if you got any citizen participation? Cause I'm trying to evaluate this from like the use standpoint of is this the appropriate use for this particular building?
Staybridge and Holiday Inn are on board. Um, we got nothing else. Even a Zoom call with a resident participation, nobody showed up to that call.
Okay. That's why we don't have the report. Okay. I just needed Elise to ask. Um, just want to make sure that it fits with the continuity and complimentary uses that we want to have. So, thank you.
Alrighty. Are we ready for roll call vote?
That's me. All right. So the motion as amended to require screening for any mechanical equipment placed on the roof with a wood composite material similar to the approved architectural elevations. Um, Commissioner, give it a go.
Yes.
Commissioner Sovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Dish?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
I apologize. I have one question. This is on the motion, right?
Yes.
This is on the motion itself, right?
Did we, did we revise this Ashley Street reference?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Then yes.
Uh, Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Waich?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Congratulations. We are on to, uh, public comment, number, item number 10. This is an opportunity for, uh, persons to speak up to three minutes on any issue. Uh, we'll first call in individuals present to address the commission and then remote participants to speak during this public hearing remotely. Press star nine if listening by phone or use the raise hand feature viewing for the web link for phone access. Call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-66341226 to unmute plus star six. City staff will still have callers that have raised their hand using the last three digits of your phone. You'll hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak. Uh, for either method of participation, please state your name and address at the beginning of the comments. Is there anyone present who would like to speak? Okay. Move on to anybody remotely. Mr. Leonard?
We have one speaker. Call with the phone number ending with 351. You can press star six to unmute your phone and address the planning commission for three minutes.
All right. Hello. I'm Alex Zittelman, a resident of the second ward, and I'm calling to speak about zoning restrictions on student cooperative housing. The inner cooperative council, ICC for short, has owned and democratically operated student cooperative housing in Ann Arbor since 1932, and it currently serves a maximum capacity of 542 resident members. And as it stands, 11 out of the 16 properties owned by the ICC are non-compliant with the UDC. Non-compliance prevents the ICC from structurally altering and renovating old properties and from buying new properties. In 2004, one of our houses called Stephen's House burnt down and because the house was non-compliant with the zoning code, we could not rebuild and had to sell the property. The ICC has lost capacity over the past decades due to discriminatory zoning laws that prevent the ICC from internally and externally expanding. To be compliant with the zoning code, student cooperatives must meet the following minimum conditions: an 8,500 square foot lot area, a 5,000 square foot floor area, and 350 square feet of lot area per occupant. These requirements describe Greek life houses, and I cannot stress enough that the ICC is not Greek life. We hold diverse housing types to meet the lifestyles and needs of our members. And even so, the ICC cannot legally operate any new houses that fail to meet these minimums. Furthermore, the ICC is geographically restricted in where it can provide affordable student housing. Student co-ops are only allowed in zones R2B and R4. Not that any properties in R4 would be compliant with our current restrictions. And just to be permitted in either of these zones, the ICC has to apply for a special exception, where everyone in the neighborhood is notified and provided an opportunity to explain why they don't want to be neighbors with students in need of affordable housing. I would like to see the planning commission take up this issue in cooperation with the ICC to permit the expansion of permanently affordable housing options in Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other speakers.
No other speakers. Okay. We are on to item 10, which is commission proposed business. Commissioner Waich?
How would we respond to the caller, Mr. Leonard?
Um, the caller had previously emailed, emailed me, um, and my intention was to, um, talk with the commission, likely the executive committee. Um, the question was posed, um, you know, we provide, we provide ordinances, um, citizens can, can apply for text changes. Um, the planning commission can initiate text amendments and the city council can request that the planning commission look at text amendments. Um, it would, like everything else, like multiple demands, it would be, um, considering if it was of interest to the planning commission and where it is a priority compared to your other work program items and making adjustments if desired or adding it for future consideration.
So could we, would ORC be the first place that it would land?
ORC would be the first place to work on proposed language. I think, uh, discussing its prioritization in the context of other ordinance changes would probably be best considered by the entirety of the commission.
Okay. And the process, is it a collective process to put it on our work plan? Or can I say, can you put that on the big document? Not the like thing that we've decided for 2022, 2023 to be the work plan, but like the, the rest of the page?
So the work program, including all those items, is approved by the commission as a whole.
Okay.
What I do every time the commission, um, desires to update that is we mine all the commission proposed business.
Okay.
And so, um, from this discussion, that's going to get added to this list.
Great.
Um, and the next time, um, and there's no, there's no restriction. The planning commission can, um, amend that work program at any time. Should be done on an annual basis. That doesn't say it can't be done more frequently.
Okay. So it'll go on the, on the list for consideration and then a commissioner would need to propose that it move up on the work plan in order for us to have the whole commission consider it?
Yeah. It would just be, uh, what we would do is I would place the work program on an agenda for consideration and it would be an opportunity for any changes to be considered. for the work program.
Okay, so I would like to ask that you consider that, especially given the fact that they had a structure burned down and then had to sell it, which took away their ability to do what they need, just so that we can take a look at that.
So.
And then just put it with R4C at the same time, and then we can get some real things going.
Just as a reminder, the UDC does provide that nonconforming structures can be invested in, and they can be modified and expanded. It is, it does require consideration by the zoning board of appeals, that happens all the time. So there is a mechanism where nonconforming structures can be invested on, certainly in the case of a really severe catastrophic loss like that. That doesn't apply, that is by nature, nonconformities is when a structure is lost beyond a certain threshold, the intention by law is that it then has to come in compliance with our current regulatory framework, so.
Commissioner Dish?
Yeah, I'm glad you started on that road of letting us know what remedies exist. So I would love to hear a little bit more about, just, you know, if it wouldn't take too much time, I would appreciate a staff overview of the problem as presented, an estimate of the hours that, an estimate of the possible effectiveness of UDC text changes for advancing this form of affordable housing, and, you know, a rough estimate of the hours, so that we can think about priorities, because we do have a lot of things, and I would absolutely love by every measure to see more affordable housing. But we do have some things lined up that should forward that, so I would want to know how much bang we're going to get for our buck.
Is the commission interested in hearing from the cooperative board directly? Or is that something you're interested in staff putting together, that research?
I was thinking that I would rather hear your expert opinion, but if you feel that we would benefit from...
Well, I'll start with what, that sort of estimate of sort of allocation of time and resources, and then we can go from there.
Commissioner Mills?
I would just add in to, like, the bottleneck is often our work plan, and how many ORC meetings there are, right? And just share for the public and for other interested folks, that there have been a couple occasions in the past, too, especially if it was like a citizen slash, like, other committee, like, the Energy Commission, right, has done the first draft of an ordinance to make it easier, so we are not starting from scratch. And it doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, we can look at the lighting ordinance, or, like, that's one, or EVs, right? It doesn't mean that it is no work for us, but particularly if it's clearer, like, I don't know, I just want to put that out there, that if there's some issue, that some other committee doesn't think we're getting too fast enough, like, by all means, like, suggest what it is that you would like to see, we still have to do our duty and pick it apart, but then we don't, we're not starting from a blank page. And for interested commission members, in the past, some of us have taken off our commissioner hat, but used our commission expertise to help facilitate those amendments, so that when they get to our table, it's, they've already had a planning commissioner kind of look at it, to know kind of, you know, not everybody knows how to read the UDC and how to write things for the UDC, so. Anyway, I just, that's, in case the caller is still listening, that's another avenue, and for anybody else who's still listening at this hour.
Mr. Leonard, did you, it looked like you wanted to say something. Am I misreading?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I guess I have a question. At one point, there was a group that was designated to be able to look at affordable housing, that was one of our subgroups, is that still a thing?
No.
No, okay. Not a thing. Alrighty. I have one other commission proposed business piece, which is, John Merzke emailed the whole group about, an expert that came and presented at the Energy Commission, and it is very worth watching. I just, you know, you speed it up to 1.5, you can get through it pretty fast, and he had a lot of really, really interesting things to say that I think would be helpful for us as we move forward. We had the luck today of having somebody who just already thought about all that stuff, but there, I found it very helpful, so I just wanted to pass that along to everybody, too. Okay, I think we are on to a derment. Everybody says aye.
Aye.
Is this the same person that...